I'm calling it to order the Southborough School Committee meeting of June 14th, 2017. And first item is executive session.
So, I would like to make a motion that we go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Due to the Chair's determination, the discussion regarding this matter in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the position of the committee with intent to return to open session.
Second. Okay, we have to walk home?
Yes.
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 Sharon? David? I don't see any audience that wants to share, so.
May I share something?
Oh, absolutely.
So, I was not able to attend the last meeting when, I guess, there was a changing of the guard, so I didn't have a chance to publicly thank Paul Desmond for his service as Chairman. I'm sure many others did, but personally, you know, I appreciated Paul's leadership, his dedication and his effort, grasp of the issues, and very effective communication. And it made my job as a member easier and more productive. And I appreciated it very much. High bar for Mr. Capper to try to achieve, but Paul, thank you very much, at least from this member to you for your service.
And from me too.
Me too, yeah. We told him to say that, right?
Very nice.
I have one noteworthy article that appeared in the community advocate, and I think the best person to speak to this is Keith LaVoix, since it's a celebration of Project Unify at Trotter. And I will distribute a colored.
Colored version.
That's why we did that at Central, so we have a colored copy here to everyone. And I'm sure Keith can speak more eloquently to the celebration.
Yeah, I'd love to. About a year and a half ago now, almost two years ago, Special Olympics, which is headquartered, you know, here in Marlboro, approached us knowing that we're an inclusive school district and an inclusive school, and wanted us to consider becoming a Project Unify school, which has a designation with them. And it's basically, the essence of it is, going out of our way to include, to have inclusive opportunities for all students, both in and out of the classroom. So, the way that it's formatted is that a couple of teachers would become advisor, organize students around it, become them aware of special needs that are in our school, and then provide, build opportunities. And it's really taken off. We have a group of to-be eighth graders that really took this on as sixth graders, embraced it, and did, I think, almost two dozen separate opportunities for kids, most of which were brand-new, things we hadn't thought of before. And then there were other opportunities that we tagged on, like our volleyball marathon, which you guys know about. We had a Project Unify aspect to that. Today, we had the Fun Run, which was a gorgeous day for it, but the Fun Run had Project Unify members participating with our special education students. And overwhelmingly, it's been one of those real community opportunities, bringing everyone together. The group has grown from a core group of five to almost 25 now, and they all equally have had a very strong role in having it build. So, word kind of got to the community advocate about the work that we're doing, and we were very flattered to have a very complimentary article written on our behalf this past weekend. And I didn't even know it was going to pop up, so it was a nice surprise to see that over the weekend, and it summarizes things pretty well, and I appreciate of the good press.
And are those all kids that are in Trotter?
Correct. All Trotter students.
All Trotter students.
Yep. Both the Project Unify members and the people with disabilities.
Right. Very cool.
Very good.
Very cool.
Yeah.
Excellent. Give credit to Mrs. Lunder and Mrs. Klein for spearheading it. They, I asked for volunteers back about a year and a half ago, and they were very quick to respond, and they have taken it and had it grown. And at times, we've got to calm the kids down because they want to do too many things. They really expand the different opportunities, but they've been great organizers for it and have led the charge, so I appreciate their efforts.
Is there just a Special Olympics here, or was that part of?
There was. They participated in that Algonquin.
Okay.
So, we had the Algonquin Games.
Yeah.
And I'm sure, are we going to be mentioning that later, the Special Olympics?
I think they just did, so probably we should keep going.
I'm sure Marie could also chime in, but we had, I don't know how many athletes, but I know from Trotter, and I know all the schools were representative in one way or the other. We had over, I think, a dozen athletes from Trotter, and then about 25 volunteers that helped out with the events, and I heard nothing but wonderful things. The students came back around 12:30 with their medals around their necks, and there was high fives galore, so it was a great event. And from all accounts, from the organization, which it is a lot of, to the actual events themselves, things went very well.
Marie, I don't know if you want to?
It was different this year because we normally do the Special Olympics event in Framingham, but due to MCAS, we weren't able to do that. We conflicted this year, so we held our own Algonquin Games, and it was so different. The field was different. There was the tunnel of love from all of the seniors at the high school, greeting athletes as they ran onto the field. There was music. It was, it was just a great event, and it was, it was beautiful, and I would love to do that again next year in the same form.
Okay. I knew I'd just seen, like, matching that up here and there, so that's cool. So, it was just a new event that you decided to do to replace the?
Yes, to replace it for this year. We may do vote next year.
Great.
Very good. Any other audience sharing? Okay, I guess we can move on to the first item of new business, and that's to ratify the agreement with the Southborough Secretaries and Educational Support Personnel.
We are very pleased to present the memorandum of agreement that really represents, I don't want to say a year long, it may feel like a year long, but many months of discussion with our Unit C, which is really the administrative assistants and our secretaries and aides who provide invaluable support for our students in and out every day throughout the year. And this is the culmination of that process, consistent with the teacher contract, the COLAR is a 2-2-2 for 17, 18, 18, 19, and the contract runs through 1920. So, it's here for you this evening. There are, we spent a lot of time reviewing the language in the contract, and there are some increases, minimal increases, in things like mandatory services provided for children and also sub-coverage and things of that nature. But generally, it was a language cleanup, and it's here tonight to vote for ratification.
We need a motion.
Why don't I move that we ratify the, is this going to be the 2017, 2018 through 2020?
Twenty.
Okay.
Three years.
So, the memorandum of understanding between the Southborough Secretaries and Educational Support Personnel for the current period of 2018 through 2020?
Twenty.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And any discussion? And we need a walk call on this.
Yes, please.
Yes.
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 I would like to extend a thank you to Mr. Fineran, who is ever-present and always helpful throughout this process, whether it's the teacher's contract or the Unit C contract. His guidance and his calm participation throughout meeting conversations is appreciated and duly noted.
And the next item on the agenda is the 2017 and 2018 School Committee Subcommittee Assignments. It is that time of year.
Unbelievable. I would make a request. I know that from year to year, we either discuss them at the committee meeting or committee members submit their areas of interest through the Chair. I would request that if we could finalize the policy subcommittee, and certainly Cheryl needs someone to do the warrants, that would be helpful. We do plan to meet over the summer, the policy group, so get a jumpstart on the school year, maybe put in a good four hours of time, so that we can go through a sizable number of policies, have them reviewed by council, and sort of move that process along. With everyone's challenging schedules, it gets more and more complex to try to have a quorum, even within our alternative.
I'm not aware that I have extended travel, you know, during the summer, so I'd be happy to, I'd be happy to take on at least the lead on the warrants. I know that everybody else is back up.
I'm very, I'm still pointed at an attorney.
I'm being volunteered.
I'm volunteering here to take Kedley's position.
I'm happy to do policy.
We were assuming that, we were hoping.
We're helping you.
We're really, really.
We were going to really, but I do have the perfect.
Of course, I'll stay on policy. And I'm glad, I normally do warrants over the summer. If you want to do warrants, that's fine.
Oh, well, I wasn't sure if this was here from last year and you needed to, okay.
I live right across the street, so generally, I just do it on the way to work. So, it's either way, but having a backup is good because it could always be a town like when I.
You know, we get those SOS emails.
People are used to calling me when you disappear, so I'm usually able to do it.
Yeah.
Perfect. We will, we will have warrants over the summer, and the warrants require a majority of the committee, so that will be three, the payable warrants.
Okay.
Payroll is just one signature.
Sure.
Payables require at least three.
Yeah, so is that, is that, how often is that, by the way?
We're going to, it's every, every couple of weeks.
Okay. It's more than once, it's, yeah, it's more than once a month, but it's not as, not usually every week.
No, it's not every week. We'd like to get them to the townhouse. The townhouse appreciates it if it's ever there.
You need to find a third, you know, times.
And I think usually, I mean, those are usually the SOS emails saying who's around, who's in town.
We always seem to manage to get through them.
It's usually not me anymore.
Yeah.
You're our last call.
I know. I'm like, well, maybe.
So, I'm around mostly, I'm around most of the summer, so, except for a few days here and there. Too late for audience sharing.
She missed us.
Oh, really? Thanks.
She must have heard the word policies.
Sorry, we already replaced you.
So, we're firm, so the, right now, we're concerned about the warrants and the other, the policy procedures subcommittee. And now, in terms of the other committees, is it just over the summer, people to think about it and get back by September? Okay. Any more discussion on this, or? The next item on the agenda is the Municipal Technology Committee discussion, and I talked to Laurie, had just a little something to say on that.
Yeah, I was the one that asked for this to be an agenda item, and I'm going to quickly recommend that we postpone it.
Okay.
It's a selectmen article, so they, she can take the lead, I think, and the first step will be, I think, determining the process to appoint members. Because the Attorney General hasn't approved this yet, it's probably a little bit premature. I wasn't sure exactly how quickly that would occur, so I think we, potentially, I think it should belong, I guess, our next official meeting. We could put it back there.
Sure.
And I will keep the Chair updated informally if anything exciting is happening early this summer, but I'm not sure that it will. That's fair.
That sounds good.
I didn't realize that he was going to go through. It makes sense.
Yeah, well, any standing committee like that, you know, does its change of the balance.
Makes sense, now that you say it, so, okay.
On the other hand, it wouldn't hurt to be thinking of all potential members, maybe feeling them out.
You're talking to people and that?
Anybody that's thinking about potential members that would, that they feel would be good members from the standpoint, you know, of representing the schools, you know, in the committee? Absolutely.
And then think of a process for interviewing for September 2, because we might, if we have multiple people for the two positions.
Sure. And, you know, if you know somebody and they need a note, and you want me to talk with them, feel free. Give me my cell phone number, whatever. I'd be happy to. But I keep that moving as we're kind of waiting, you know, to get organized for the selection. I think, I'm not sure, I think the existing NTC, I think that, I think that ends at the end of this month. I don't know what the selection are going to do, but I, now there probably will be some transition things that maybe some of the members will participate in, but I'm not sure, so that's not important.
And the next issue, the next item on the agenda is the legislative update.
Our agendas over the last several years have included a section for legislative discussions, and I know there was some activity, and we thought there might be something to discuss that was timely and pertinent, and then poof, it was done with a vote of the House or the Senate. But I think that, as I think about the kinds of communications that are taking place at the superintendent's level through the Superintendent's Association, but also with MASC, next year could prove to be a very active year for some interesting conversations. And so, what I'd like to request through the Chairs is that we, in fact, and put this back on the agenda for timely and relevant topics of interest, and keep that first and foremost as part of our conversation, because it does make a difference, as we know, and we've heard from time to time, and just put that in as a regular agenda item. So, what's going on?
It should almost be a standard.
Just a standard agenda item.
It's easy to say nothing to update, but it makes us think about it, you know, each time.
Yeah. No, I think it would be helpful, because there always is stuff, you know, we get the flyers from the Mass School Committee, and there's always something being noted, and Paul noted something the other day, sent over to me too, so, and we have kind of gotten away from that, I think, for a little bit.
Even just reviewing the MASC flyer.
Right.
It's always chock full of something and of interest, and maybe just making that part of our conversation.
Sometimes you read it, sometimes you don't, so sometimes this spurs you to go back and read again. Something I didn't read. I guess legislative update would be any news on the budget? I mean, we're at June 14.
I don't think that's come out of the Baker's office yet.
It's got to be finalized by June 30th, right? So, we're not as shortly thereafter, and we think things are, we're not going to get any big surprise. Who knows? Okay.
Well, the last I saw that they were making some cuts, but none of the cuts were necessarily pertinent, just for us to do business as we would do business. There were still some conversations at the regional level about what they were going to do with regional transportation. One little interesting note with respect to that, because it does in fact affect, not necessarily KA, but our Southborough budget indirectly, because we also vote the region's portion, is that they're opening, they were discussing adding a million dollars to regional transportation, which on the surface sounds like, oh, phenomenal, you know, amount, but in fact, simultaneously, they're allowing charter schools to regionalize. And so, that then would allow small charter regional school systems to have access to that regional transportation money. So, while it seems like in addition to what we're, you know, what we receive now, the likelihood is great that if these charter schools do start forming as a region, which could simply be two charters next door to one another forming a region, depending on the process they put in place and how cumbersome that is, that the number of regions that will now, the sheer number and the increase that would be able to access these funds could actually reduce our regional transportation. So, we're sort of keeping a watchful eye over on that piece to see how it actually impacts us long-term, and how many charters start forming as a region. And then, as always, it's back and forth over circuit breaker and whether they're going to add or not add, so.
Circuit breaker is always a big target.
Right. I think to the legislature, June 30th is like a year from now. They have plenty of time to change the budget 20 more times before they have to vote on something final, right? But so far, so good.
There was another big thing today, though. There was a Constitutional Convention today where they voted to approve the Millionaire's Tax. You know, this is, it's going to be a change to the state constitution, and it was voted on last session, it has to be voted on two sessions in a row, so it was today, so the next step goes on the ballot in 2018. And that's, estimated to raise $2 billion would be, half of which goes to education.
Hmm. It goes on the ballot next year, right?
2018, yeah.
Well, that will be something to watch.
Yes.
It's going to be a battle, I'm sure, so.
Hmm. Well, on that note.
On that note, we'll move to summer learning programs.
Well, as we've learned from year to year, we never close our doors. Education continues in one form or another all year long, and Southborough schools are certainly a very active place for our students to come and continue to enjoy school and maybe warmer times. And Marie is here, Marie Allen, Director of Student Support Services, to provide somewhat of a brief overview of what's going to be happening in our schools, and the numbers of students, and the kinds of programs we offer over the summer.
Okay. We have 13 total programs across all three districts, pre-K through high school through age 21. Five of those programs are going to be housed here in Southborough at Finn and at Trotter Schools, and it was an effort, in the effort to consolidate and pool the nursing staff and the specials, so there's some money savings there in doing that. And by specialized services, OT, PT, speech and language, those types of services. So, there are two morning and afternoon preschool programs at Finn, and also at Finn is the full-day intensive preschool and the Castle Paper Life. So, there's a combination of five-day, five-week and seven-week programs at those schools. Trotter Middle School is hosting the NECC partnership program, and that's also a seven week program. So, those are the five programs that will be housed in Southborough. The number of students for the total is between 200 and 225, and that's for all three districts. But for Southborough, it's in the 75 to 80 student range. We haven't gotten all the responses back, so that's when, in the new age. We presented ESY programming to our parents on May 1st at the high school, as far as what 2017 would look like, and our 2016 survey results were presented at that time. One of the areas was programming, and we had good, mostly great, survey results as far as strongly agreeing to timely information shared about our services with the parents at team meetings. We had 80 to 85% strongly agreed to our performance in that area, and we also had information on performance on how the students did in ESY programming, was also 80 to 85% strongly agreed with the response that they got back. For transportation, we had challenges around the transportation issues in the very beginning being successfully resolved, so that rate was about 60% that were not satisfied with transportation issues that had happened in the very beginning. So, what we did in response to that, and we pacified families at our May 1st meeting, was to ask Van Coe to come in prior to the start of ESY to answer all the questions, because some of these parents don't take van-transportation, their students don't take van-transportation during the year, so they're not familiar with the Van Coe process if they take the mall school bus. So, they need to have a tentative time of June 28 at 6:00 PM, but the location is in the process of being settled. So, in response to the parents, they were very happy that we were going to have this pre-meeting with Van Coe, so they know the rules and regulations and get found information prior to the start of ESY. So, we're hoping that the problems that might happen in the beginning of the summer will be addressed earlier. And then, we also had favorable results for our changes to our PragMatics-only program. That program changed to include Minecraft and also other programming activities, and that went over very well, so we're going to continue with that for this year. Any questions?
Yeah, I have one, Marie. If, my understanding, I don't, not sure if I recall this correctly, ELL students, do they all have access to the summer program?
Not to, you have to have the individualized education program in order to access these ESY services.
Okay.
Some ELL students are, do have.
But they would have to be both?
They would have to have an IEP in order to assist attempt, but there is a separate ELL program for students in the summer.
Okay.
So, that's separate, and that could be an additional number from the 75 to 80.
Yes.
Our 75 to 80, are, are they all staying in Southborough, or are some, are K-3 kids, are some of them going to the high school or Northborough for their summer program?
Their summer programs, not to the high school, but possibly, no, maybe to Melican for one of their programs possibly, but not.
Not really.
It's not, it's like onesie-twosie, it's not, most of our summer, our kids are.
Now, for the summer programs for the, for the ELL students, they're also taught in district, and do we know approximately how many students? Don't know? Okay.
Do you want to take that, Mr. Fineran?
Sure. So, we had Rhoda Webb, Director of English Learners, has a summer program that's two weeks in August.
Okay.
And she invites all of our ELL students to participate, so in the past, we've had over 100 students participate.
Yeah.
And it's a multi-age model, project-based model, and it culminates in a visit to one of the local colleges, and very successful. And that's housed at Z Elementary School, if you want to go up.
Okay, so that would be held in the off program.
Busy summer.
It is busy summer. There's a lot of summer programs going on.
Great programs.
And it ranges from July, it starts July 5, and it ends August 4. It depends on a five-week or seven-week program, so it's in the most of the summer.
I also think one of the great components of the program is that we do staff most of these programs with our existing teachers and aides and so forth, so the students are familiar with the teachers and the support staff, and if they weren't yet, they would be in preparation for the upcoming school year. So, it's a nice transitional opportunity for staff and teachers and kids to get to know one another better.
Great. Next item is facilities updates for the summer.
As we know, this is a combination update, status of where we are with Mr. White's retirement. A lot of that unfortunately going on this year, but Mr. White's position has been filled by Phil Reinhardt, who is a former town employee, and he's done a tremendous job for us in his short time in the district, really tackled some extensive projects, and has done an amazing job just being a support, great relationship with our custodial staff, and he will be retiring at the end of June. We do have, we did have some interviews conducted by, Keith LaVoix was part of the interview team, Cheryl, and we extended an invitation to Karen Gallion to see if she wanted to lend some expertise, and she was delighted to serve on the screening committee. So, that was kind of a nice connection with the town, and it gave her an opportunity to get to know us and for her to tap into her skill set as well, and give us some, you know, some good advice and good suggestions and input. And then Phil was part of that. So, we do have a finalist. He's moving towards me either Tuesday or Wednesday of next week, and hopefully, there'll be an update. And very pleased with his resume, and the interview committee was pleased with his response. In terms of busy summer, it doesn't end with the education of our students. It also continues with the upgrading of our facilities and doing some much-needed work that simply can't be done when the students are here and we're in session. So, Cheryl and I are going to do a tag team on this, because we went through our entire list the other day.
From our heads.
From our heads. And we agreed that we would share in the welfare. So, you know, one of the things that we've really spent a lot of time on is safety and upgrading our safety facilities and also our safety programming with the introduction of ALICE, safety protocols and so forth. So, we have been able to move to a keyless entry in all of our schools, with the good input of the principals and the tech team identifying key locations in the school. We will be keyless and FOB-present, ever-present. I was going to say FOB-free, but we're. we're actually moving to the FOB. And the wiring has been done, and I think we'll be able to open all of our schools with sort of a key pass, which really does increase the level of security and certainly helps whenever we have to change over staff, that's all done through technology. So that's very exciting for us. And, you know, good work by lots of people, and again, thank Greg Martino and Cheryl for really participating in this process, as well as our tech team and our building administrators. I know this came up a couple times, particularly with the MCAS 2.0 testing around the wireless access here at Trotier, so we've got some significant infrastructure upgrades taking place here at Trotier over the summer. Keith's pretty happy about that as well, and I'm sure the kids and the staff will be. Keith actually presented some information about seating when you shared with us your school improvement plan. And thanks to the generous contribution of SEF, the Southborough Ed Foundation, and through their grant-writing opportunity, I think we're gonna move in that direction, and you have some of those seats. What do they call it, Magic World?
Pretty much, pretty much.
Pretty much.
Yeah, just very innovative seating designs and options, furniture options, basically, to make more collaborative settings is the goal. So SEF awarded us a sizable grant, and we're hoping to capitalize on that and see how much transformation we can have. But as you know, going to, purchasing furniture is not a cheap endeavor. So this is the start of hopefully, you know, a phased-in project as we continue to look at different configurations and different styles and stuff like that. And we're collaborating with Steelcase, which is a company out of Boston, that is working with us to, for us to be a research site for them as well. So hopefully that comes with a few more chairs and a few more tables, but no promises have been made. We'll see.
And staying here at Trotier, our look is going to be a little different next year, because we're doing some significant upgrades here in the library. So the seating may change, and how we present and what we present on will look a little bit different with some, the presentation system, that will be a significant upgrade from the, well, the laptop on the cart somewhere.
It's over there, yeah.
And projection and just audio visual. So I think, Keith, you're moving us back a little bit.
Pushing us back towards the windows.
So we can have a bigger audience seating.
So the audience would be here, and we'll be pushed back there, and those cases are gonna be pushed out to the side to make.
So that's, that's very.
And do you do other, it's not just for us?
No, actually, it's a presentation system that's gonna have a lot of different modes to it, where we will now, right now it's very restrictive on how many students we can get in this space. By pushing it back there and opening things up a bit, we're hoping to get at least half a class in here at one time, if not greater. So it has tremendous upside to it, so looking forward to it.
And that's the inside, we have some outside beautification projects. If you come in the back way to Trotier.
It's getting there.
Total landscaping taking place, and that's something that Keith has actually requested for a couple of years, and we've been able to move forward with that. I think one of the most attractive parts, certainly inside, is being here with our students and teachers, but it's nice to have a beautiful approach to our campus as well, and so we're going to be doing some work around that. If you've been to Woodward or had an opportunity to walk around the land, there's all kinds of tree work going on and removing the dead trees, and that's really a safety issue as well. There were a number of dead trees around the campus, and we're cleaning that out, clearing that out, to make that even more beautiful and safe for our students and parents who actually access the playground on the weekends and things like that. And then we're hopeful that we're going to be able to do some work with Neri's Courtyard, Kathleen's had to add her pencil out and design expertise for some time to make that a really engaging educational environment for our students. It's a great space and underutilized, so Kathleen has presented some wonderful designs for that. Every summer, somebody's on the move, and so we might have some room moves from here and there, and that's always a project in and of itself for the teachers, but also for the facilities folks, to make sure that everybody's situated and ready for the start of the school year. And Cheryl, what did I forget?
I don't think you forgot anything that we're planning for the summer, but we were able to get a jump step on some of the projects that we had discussed with you earlier this year, one of which is the bleacher mover over to Trotier. So that was able to get done right at, started April vacation and finished right after April vacation, so that, that's one we won't have to worry about this summer, but at least it's complete now. We've started the work on the Deerfield sign, wrote the sign that's on that, back on driveway for Trotier. That is actually at Mason right now trying to, trying to do some work, so we hope to get that.
Oh, is that the masonry work?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, I noticed that.
Granite insert and the rock wall itself.
Okay.
So that's started, but hopefully we'll get reinstalled and be all set by the end of the summer. We also talked about the hot water storage tank here at Trotier. That was, that we were able to get approved as well, so that was, that was good. And I think everything else is mentioned, there are some driveway repairs over at Finn School, that's on our radar, and will be worked on this summer.
Lot of work.
It's a lot of work. But you know, I really am impressed with the way the facilities look generally, I mean, it's just, you know, we're doing a good job and, you know, we just have to keep doing it. I'm very impressed with it.
They generally go in and just break clean. There's not much to it, so they finish it off.
But I find that even when things like the masonry, the sign coming in on Deerfoot, that only, that's only been a problem the last few months. I don't know about last few months, it's not old, but you got on it right away. You know, so that's appreciated, you know? Because I go by it, I walk my dog down that way all the time. And it wasn't there a long, a year or two ago, I don't think, you know, so.
Is that a winter damage?
Something hit it. Yes, I thought a cow might have hit it or a fowl, something hit it.
We'll just talk winter damage.
Hundred percent accidental.
Okay, under old business, the Finn and Woodward principal search update.
The update is, we're no longer searching. And Mr. Randall will be retiring, and still, you know.
Still retiring.
Still retiring.
Oh, that's not good with that.
I'm sure we'll have much more to share during audience sharing, but tonight, if you had a chance to visit Woodward, there was a meet and greet for Principal Mucci. I think everyone here stopped over at one point, and there was always smiles, and of course the ice cream truck, snow cones helped in this weather, but I think also Mr. Mucci's presence brought smiles to a lot of the students' faces, and there were a number of parents there, and he reported a steady flow, and I think he was gonna get ready for his next wave, because it was right about six-thirty when folks were, you know, coming home from work and probably stopping off to meet him. So we thank SOS for hosting this event and giving parents an opportunity to meet the new principal, so students are relaxed and parents are relaxed too. They've put a name to a face and had an opportunity to meet who the incoming Finn students will have and the students who are at Woodward, so very nice. And Mr. Mucci will be providing other opportunities as well as we get closer to the school year. And then there's someone named Clayton Ryan, I don't know who he is, but it's interesting, you had a nameplate, and now that you're the principal appointee.
That's not an old name.
It isn't, we're making the letters bigger, it comes with moving from assistant principal to. So we're thrilled that Clayton Ryan accepted the position at Finn for principal, and great feedback from everyone, lots of smiles all the way around, and looking forward to working with Clayton in his new role as principal of the Finn School. A successful search all the way around.
Jim's letter's bigger than all the rest.
That's true.
Age, years of service. He actually asked us to increase the size of his letters after he went over ten years of service, so.
I wanted them in lights, but.
Wants to make sure that people can read them if they don't have their glasses on.
Jim, I think your name was in lights at the party, big.
Billboard lights, yes.
It was a nice look.
I just wanted to say that I wanted to thank the administration too for all the work you've done on all the searches this year, not just in Southborough, but also at the regional. And I know it's been a lot of work, and it's very much appreciated, and I think we had a really successful result, so I just want to say thank you.
Someone who served on the committee, you appreciate, the search committee, you appreciate the amount of work that takes to get coordinated and such, so, yeah.
Well, I would just like to extend a thank you to all of the administrative team who served on the various committees, to Greg who chaired the high school search committee. You know, one of the things that we do very well is collaborate and engage, and, you know, you appreciate that when you talk to some of the folks who come in from a different district, and they're sort of overwhelmed by the fact that we invite all of these people to sit around the table, and people willingly come in and give of their time, and I think it's really a strong statement to folks who are not as familiar with the district and our core values as, as in their previous locations or previous experiences, that that's just who we are, that we appreciate the input and we engage and we collaborate and we reach out. For our administrators and central office folks, they otherwise have jam-packed days with many other meetings, but they find somehow the time to serve on these committees, as well as the school committee members. I know you do this for fun, and in your spare time, I'm sure, but finding the time in your day to participate is really important, or even just to stop by during the site visits and put a name to a face and have an opportunity to have a conversation with the candidates, it really makes a very positive impression on the folks who may be fortunate enough to join our district, so thank you to everyone. But we're glad they're all over.
So are we.
They're all over for this year.
No, they're over. I'll just take this year, at this point.
Take it one year at a time. Okay, next item on the agenda is the FY seventeen monthly general fund expenditure report.
So the May, as of May thirty-first expenditure report is included in your packet, and as always, we would ask that you entertain a vote to approve until audited. I know June is an extremely busy time for our business office as we begin to close down one school year and get ready to open up for entering purchase orders and things like that, the FY two thousand eighteen budget. So I know that Cheryl is busy doing all those things that are necessary to close out a successful budget season, and the June, the end of the year, will be presented at the next school committee meeting. Cheryl, I don't know if you're gonna say anything particular about this process or the budget, where we are now.
I think we're right where we should be right now, we've got one, this was as of the end of May, so it was, still we had another one, right? So it's.
One giant payroll to process.
Most of the payrolls encompassed, but then I had to get that out, and yeah, so we've got one more.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I will motionally accept the Southborough Public School District FY two thousand seventeen budget as of May thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, until August.
All those in favor? The votes.
Kindergarten tuition, we probably could have flipped enrollments over the kindergarten tuition, because what we'll see is a change, as we discussed, in staffing, it's not reflected on this sheet, but what we have done is add a seventh teacher to kindergarten. We talked about that a little bit when we started talking about transitioning from revolving to operational. I'm pleased to say that even with that addition of a staff member, and Jim, these numbers are dead on, they're not one forty, so I believe them. So that'll put our class sizes around seventeen. These smiles, seventeen in kindergarten. We're still not moving forward with a half-day model, in fact, it will be blended with six students projected. And I think what we found over time, Jim, correct me if I'm misstating this, that from time to time, those six move into full day. We've had that happen almost every year, so that six will probably even go down slightly.
I think it's four.
Four, now, good. Well, not good, but that is an updated number. So what we have done, of course, is we've stayed steady with the percent that we've moved on to budget, which at last was around sixty-eight percent, and that's what is, will be captured on our operational budget. We have begun to analyze the tuition numbers, which include waivers and free and reduced participation, which really does impact what we're going to charge for that rate. At this point, while it may be premature, we know that from thirty-two fifty, we'll below, we'll at least below, be below three thousand, and our estimate is somewhere between twenty-eight hundred and three thousand at this point for tuition, which in one year is a significant drop. And so we will be talking about this as part of our budget process next year, and when we return in September, we can certainly share out what that final resolution was in terms of what the cost was for tuition revolving. At this point, we only ask for a deposit, so the best they will receive is a discount on what they've paid in, what they know was prior tuition of thirty-two fifty. So we're really pleased with the progress we made in one year. Good work by everyone, and again, the committee, the K committee was a really positive group to be working with over these last three years, and their input, Jim Randall's input, really appreciative, Mary Beth served as a liaison to that, and I know we'll be taking this up again for consideration in the new budget season. So that's where we are right now. And then we have the enrollments in the packet, always fun to look at, actually, I enjoy the flip side, which shows the variance and really how closely our numbers track against our projections, our actuals at the end of the year. There's really not significant fluctuations. And one of the things that's true in Southborough, and I know the town is even doing more to support their, the way in which they gather census data, for the most part, the census data in town is really helpful with our projections, and we track very closely to that, it's not necessarily the case everywhere. So it really does provide a much more definitive number than NASDAQ. Five pages of disclaimer on the projections at the bottom of their page. So again, we're excited to see what our numbers will be when we open in August.
And. Educational policy, and there's none at this time. And policy development and distribution.
Distribution only, all, all, for your. Right, online scan, or if you're still carrying that book around, policies to add to your book.
And personnel items?
Personnel items, oh, two principals appointments, Steven Mucci and Clayton Ryan. And we have a retirement, another person happily moved on to retirement, and that's Kim Barton at the Trotier School.
And communications, there are none at this time.
Right.
And action on minutes, I know we have a lot of minutes in here.
We do, this is really exciting, we set a goal to try to close out a year and not carry these forward. Many of these are sort of a little bit of redundancy, because it was a negotiation year, and they've been, you know, the updates all the way through, we've met several times. For the most part, my note seems to indicate that we can release most of these minutes, which.
It's actually a mix, there's a mix, right?
Right.
Ones to be released and ones, so how would we do the motion on this? Would we do them all at once or one at a time? Because there is a mix, I'm not sure which ones are retained by looking at this.
I am looking at the March seventh, October thirteenth, February eighth, and April twelfth, retained executive session minutes, we could take those all together, which is basically a recommended vote to release all of those minutes.
Okay.
I don't know if you have this particular sheet in your packet, which is a summary.
Let me move to the release, the executive session minutes of the following four dates, and these have all been accepted and retained, and I'll just list them along with the date that they were accepted and retained. Minutes for March seventh, two thousand sixteen, accepted and retained, January eleventh, two thousand seventeen. Minutes for October thirteenth, two thousand sixteen, accepted and retained, December fourteenth, two thousand sixteen. Minutes for February eighth, two thousand seventeen, accepted and retained, March seventh, two thousand seventeen. And finally, the minutes of April twelfth, two thousand seventeen, accepted and retained, May tenth, two thousand seventeen. May tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I'm gonna abstain since I was here.
In a way, as, as a point of order, you can vote...
Okay.
On minutes for a meeting that you were not, uh, that you did not attend.
Oh, interesting.
Just, that doesn't mean you have to vote.
Okay.
We did, we did get...
If saying is fine too.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause I think people do have to tap one way, half the other way.
Okay. Okay.
And so for the, the rest of the minutes that are so noted, um, I'm not sure if anyone has a concern about releasing any of the executive session minutes. Um, the summary suggests that we could move forward to vote to approve the open minutes and vote to approve and release the executive session minutes.
I, I just wanna make the point that, um, for the executive session minutes for May tenth, I was actually there instead of Kathleen.
Okay. Thank you.
Can we pull the minutes for both the March eighth and the March, April twenty-fifth special open meeting opposed to four town meetings? We need some clarification on both who was there and what those meetings were about.
Which one again, Kathleen? March eighth?
March eighth and April twenty-fifth. We can, we can, we don't need to figure it out tonight, but let's not...
Okay, you wanna pull them?
I wanna pull them.
Sure. Yep. Absolutely. Any other ones you wanna pull?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
All right. Any other minutes that we want to pull with the correction offered by Katara?
So do we have to separate the vote to approve from the vote to approve and release? A mix of each?
Right. We put the, we put them in to have a match when an executive session followed the same date. Um, I, I, I don't think it matters as long as they're voted to, you know, approve and release.
Which ones do we release? I gotta pull these up.
Yep. Then we, I think we have to go through and just mock off, okay, so...
That's fine.
Which ones have we, which ones did we release with Roger?
We did the, uh, it's a separate sheet.
It is.
Uh, which has the subcommittee meeting, the three subcommittee meeting minutes and then for retained executive session minutes, so...
So the ones that...
We haven't dealt with the subcommittees yet.
Yeah. So the ones that you've just, um, voted to release?
Yep.
Are not identified on, well, they are, the May tenth, we can cross that off, two thousand seventeen executive session.
So we don't have copies of the ones we released?
We don't have copies of those, right.
The ones we just, that have previously been approved?
And not here.
And we just released them, we don't have copies of them.
Right.
So the, everything we have in our packet has not been approved.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Now, now I got it.
And the ones we just recommended to release, they aren't on the list.
Right. Cause they were already voted.
That's correct.
All we're doing is...
Okay.
Voting to release them. They've already been approved. Stay with us. With the exception of pulling those two, March eighth, two thousand seventeen, which was the special open meeting, which is number seven. And Tuesday, April twenty-fifth, which was...
Number eight.
The special meeting, which was, um, number eight. We could entertain a motion to vote to approve the minutes so noted in the agenda. We're gonna defer to Katara whether we have to read them each into the record or not.
So we, we basically...
Yeah.
It's the eleven, it's the eleven minutes minus seven, number seven and eight?
Right.
Okay, so, so...
I think we should read them.
You wanna read them?
Yes.
Okay.
No, and we've got the re, open, open meeting minutes of August fourth. There's also a special open.
Before, if we're going into executive session, generally we have to have a special open meeting to call into executive session. That's why you have two sets of minutes for really actually only one minute that included any notes.
So I'll move that we approve the meetings of the following dates.
Thank you.
The special open meeting of August fourth, the special open meeting of October twenty-fifth.
Twenty-sixteen.
The open meeting of, and I'm sorry, both of those were two thousand and sixteen.
Mm-hmm.
And the open meeting of May tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
Mm-hmm.
And I think out of that list, because we pulled two, those are the three...
Mm-hmm.
Open meetings that we would, uh, approve.
Mm-hmm. Right.
Was the May tenth one approved as amended? With Katara's amendment?
Mm-hmm. So amended.
Executive session date.
Right.
All right. I'll second.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Now, if, in that, in that list, there are, um, several executive session meet, minutes to approve and release.
Mm-hmm.
And you think we're fine, we have a right vote, you think we're fine to approve and release that?
Right. Yes.
And I presume that if you, if you want to pull one out, you could amend the motion I'm gonna make, which is effectively going to combine them. So I'll move that we approve and release the executive session minutes of the following dates. August fourth, two thousand and sixteen, October twenty-fifth, two thousand and sixteen, December fourteenth, two thousand and sixteen, January eleventh, two thousand and seventeen, and May tenth, two thousand and seventeen.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
As amended.
And do we have a second? A second? Any, any more discussion? All those in favor? Just Carrie's.
One more set.
Okay.
The subcommittee minutes. And this is where we tend to fall a little behind because oftentimes we don't have another subcommittee member, uh, meeting until a year from when the minutes were created. So, um, there's an additional attachment, which, um, is not otherwise included in the list that was just approved. And it, I'm, uh, would request from the committee a vote to approve the subcommittee minutes of the operational budget subcommittee of January thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, capital planning subcommittee meeting of December sixth, and the policy development subcommittee meeting of March seventh, two thousand seventeen. And that will bring us completely current on our subcommittees and all of the meetings this year.
I'll move that we approve the subcommittee meetings that the superintendent just named.
And do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And that's a lot of good work.
Yes, all right.
Start the year off fresh with our meeting packets. Thank you.
People will be happy with it.
Yes. Thank you.
And next on the agenda is approval of bill and payrolls, which we passed around at the end. And finally, agenda items for next month.
Two.
Fix the chair.
Ooh. Glad that the key's listed for the library.
Fix the opening shot. Yes, we're doing it.
I'm gonna add it.
It's the most good this meeting wasn't, like, a couple days ago.
Yeah. So we have two agenda items, uh, proposed for our September meeting. And, uh, what, the first is, uh, it's been some time since we've had a conversation about world language, and I think that was a, a suggestion by Katara when we had met a couple weeks ago. And, um, it's been also, uh, somewhat of a tradition, depending on the year, so I don't know if that's called a tradition or not, but it's always nice to have SOS and SCF start off the year. Uh, they give a little bit of an overview of the plans that they have for the school year. And it gives us an opportunity to thank them, um, as a leadership team and as a committee and the community for all of the support that they provide, you know, throughout the year for our schools and teachers and students. So, um, we might wanna invite them to our first meeting. And it's a, it's sort of a nice way to kick off a new school year.
And I'm assuming we'll hopefully have new facilities...
Hopefully.
To get an update on, sort of, meet the new person and get an update on the summer.
Yep.
Which is always, besides, I mean, it's always, I always like the first meeting when we hear about the opening of schools and stuff.
Be a busy summer.
It's usually a pretty busy meeting too, cause everybody's kind of, you know, they're right back in and, you know...
So sometimes I see up and, those guys come later anyway.
Right.
You never know when they're available and stuff.
We got the subcommittee vote too, right?
Oh, right.
Yes, subcommittee.
Subcommittee vote to get our subcommittee set.
Yeah. That's usually a full agenda. But it's usually full of good news.
And last on the agenda is audience sharing.
I'm sorry, um, I thought you were, talk about this, yeah. And, and we're gonna, kinda repost that MTC...
MT's finesse?
Item for, for that next meeting.
Yep.
And we know as a group discusses, but at least we'll be on the...
We should, we should put it on. Sorry. And last on the agenda is audience sharing.
Hi. My name's Kathleen Pledgus.
Nice to meet you.
Twenty-eightth year, bride. I'm a former member of the Southboro School Committee. I'm a former chair of the Southboro School Committee, and I am a parent. Um, and I would, first of all, like to thank Mr. Chapman for that wonderful, um, acknowledgement that you gave at the town meeting. Thank you very much. I'd like to, that was very nice of you to do that to all the outgoing, uh...
Much deserved.
Well, it was very thoughtful of you. Thank you very much. But this is not about me. This is about Mr. Randall. Um, I would like to just take a little trip down memory lane, a short one, cause it's one hundred and ten degrees here. Um, because I'm one of the, not one of the, I think I'm the only person who has known Mr. Randall as both, as all, a parent. I also served under him as a substitute teacher and as, as a school committee member. Um, and it was actually Mr. Randall who I think was my first principal that I subbed for. And so, we know how long ago that was. Um, but I remember, I, I subbed quite often because when Mr. Randall came in, he was an incredibly collaborative administrator, and he was always taking the teachers off site for, you know, team building things, which was, it, I mean, they said stuff about that. That was apparently very innovative back then. Like, that hadn't been done before. So you had high marks from them just for doing that kind of stuff. But one of the first times that, um, I was in a, I think a second grade classroom, and I hadn't even taken attendance yet because the kids had a special first period. So I basically saw them and then they went off, and then there was a fire drill. And so, and you probably don't remember this, but I remember this vividly. So there I am in an empty classroom with a fire drill, and I'm like, I don't know what to do without kids. So I just grabbed the bag and I went walking down the hall, and there's Mr. Randall right at the back door where all the, you know, the kids in the classrooms are all leaving. And I had to say to him under my breath because I'm like, thanks a lot for telling me. You could've told me there was a fire drill. And he just smiled and off I went. And then I come to find out much later that that was not a drill. There was actually, like, something was smoking in the kitchen, and so this was actually, like, a real kind of fire emergency. But you would never have known that from looking at Jim's face and from his demeanor, and he, I mean, for all intents and purposes, I thought it was a fire drill. And that's sort of the theme that you have brought all these years to the Southboro School District, that I and everybody else thank you for. Um, even as a school committee member, I'm sure that there was all sorts of things going on in your school, but we never knew about it. Like, it was never, there was never any drama associated with it. You just put your head down and you did your job, and maybe underneath the water, you were paddling as fast as you could, but on the surface, you were just a duck lying along, like, everything was okay, you didn't have a worry in the world. And, um, and that says a lot about just, you know, not only you, but what you would then, as the, the example that you gave to all the teachers and to your coworkers and even to us as school committee members. Um, so the last thing I would say is that when I was leaving the house, my kids asked me where I was going. Um, my kids who are eighteen and twenty, and I said, and I told them I was going to, you know, say goodbye to Mr. Randall. And so my eighteen-year-old said, oh my God, he's still there? And so we took a little trip down memory, memory lane of principals, and I'm like, yeah, except for Mrs. Murdock, they're all still there. Cause Mr. Ryan was an assistant principal when my kids were at Finn. And so that ju, right, so that just says so much for our school district that, you know, we're not just a stockout manager, we're not a parking spot. We, you know, people who come here are dedicated professionals and they stay and they just, you know, continue to make our community great. So Mr. Randall, thank you very much for all your years of service. Like, you have been an incredibly collaborative member of the community, you know, not just an administrator, but as a parent, you know, you asked me how things were going. As a substitute teacher, you asked me how things were going and constantly gave me feedback. And you've just been an inspirational leader and a, a constant professional. And thank you very much, and we will miss you greatly.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
David Finner, president of the Teachers Association. Just a couple of things I wanna close the year for us, winding down by saying thank you to the school committee and the administration. It's had a very successful year. Your commitment, dedication, constant battling for public education doesn't go unnoticed by us, and we greatly appreciate all the effort for us. So thank you for that. Mr. Randall, on behalf of all the teachers and staff in the Southboro, you're going to be terribly missed. Can't thank you enough for your commitment, dedication, your perseverance and hard work for public education. Um, your name is way up here when people speak of administrators across central Mass. You're gonna be missed. Big shoes to fill, but Kathleen, you've done a great job and is doing so. Can't thank you enough. Enjoy your time.
I will. Thank you very much.
I would just like to say, as I guess longest-serving member, I guess on the committee, and I also go back like Kathleen, my daughter, my youngest, was, uh, one of your first stu, your first year. So, um, and I was saying that to her, and she's like, so making her, she's like, gonna be a junior in college, so, um, so going back to when we, um, interviewed you and hadn't even met you over the phone, it was a, um, a very worthwhile interview. So, um, like Kathleen said, you've been such a wonderful, calm, steady presence, just guiding the schools for all these years, that, um, I, thank you. But I also agree that you get to enjoy your retirement and your grandkids, and we'll miss you, but, um, thanks for all you've done for all this over the years, so...
Hey, Jim, I wanna say that too. Both of my children attended your school. I, I think my daughter was there the first year that you came in.
Okay.
You know, and I remember, I remember you coming in and, um, and what a great, and I could just say, what a great job the kids come out of that school. They come out of that school in such good shape, so I really appreciate it.
I'll echo that. I think you were a widely veteran by the time my kids got there. It was, they both had great experiences at, at Inwoodwood, but I think it should also be noted that, uh, you stepped up to take over Finn at a time when, you know, it really helped because they probably saved, I don't know, a teacher job or two. And, uh, you know, I thought it was gonna be just a one or two-year kinda deal, and we just straight... But what was it, six years later, you're still there?
Yeah.
Something like that. So, thank you for that.
Jim, my, my kids were gone before you got there, but I know they would've enjoyed you.
You know, Jim, you were there when it was a brand-new building, almost, almost brand-new.
Yes. Second year.
Second year, yeah. What a building. What a, what a beautiful building, too. Oh, my God.
All right, I just wanted to say, on behalf of the entire NASA team, Jim, I don't know what we can do without you. Your wisdom, your wit, just your wild and wonderful ways at all of the different events that we host, and your collaboration, your educational leadership and excellence is extraordinary. And the past week in the community has been Jim Randall Week. And I think for all that Jim brings to our district, to the lives of our students and teachers, we could have had easily fifty-one more weeks to celebrate all that Jim represents in this, this world we call education. It has been an absolute privilege. I remember our first meeting. Jim, I was being introduced, and Jim leaned over to me and said, do you remember, Joe? We joke about it. Yeah, I could do, I could do their job. And from there, you could, and you could do anything you wanted to in the field of education, because you are extraordinary. And it has been a privilege to be working side by side over the last six years. So, thank you on behalf of everyone in the NASA team.
I, I just want to say that, you know, working in South Row has been just phenomenal. The school committee selectmen, our SOS group, our SEF group, the amount of support that one feels here as an administrator is just outstanding. And as David Innerin said, people come here and they stay here, and there's a reason they stay here. And it's really because, you know, the old saying, it takes a village. This village really supports education, it supports the teachers. And I have felt so loved and supported this past week especially. Terry was there at my retirement party, getting some video footage. I believe the word to use is epic. The presentations, video clips were just phenomenal. This week, I started the week on Monday with Mustache Monday. All five hundred of our students at Finn and Woodward and staff wearing a mustache. Tuesday morning, I came into this beautiful mural made by Heather DeBois, our art teacher, and our students with, you know, small squares that create this masterpiece of me. Masterpiece not being me, but the artwork. Just phenomenal hanging from the lobby. And just the, really the appreciation that sometimes we don't always feel as school leaders, because it's not always an easy job, has just been outpouring unbelievably this past week, so I thank everybody. I've had the pleasure to spend the last six years with Mr. Ryan. I have no doubt that he's going to do a phenomenal job at the Finn School. I spent a day with Mr. Mucci last week, transitioning the school. He's a great guy. I am, I am thrilled for my school and for him, and for all of you, because I think you have two great principals coming your way. And so, somebody said to me, isn't that hard to do? I said, it's hard, but you know what? When you're giving somebody something to two great people, it makes it a lot easier. So, you know, my colleagues to my right have just been phenomenal there all the time. Our NASA, our support from our central office has just been phenomenal. So, you know, thank you, everybody. It's been a great career. I, I did what I wanted to do. I love my job. I still love my job, and I think it's great that I'm leaving at a time when I still love my job. So, thank you, thank you. I will miss all of you and appreciate your support.
And what always happens when people retire?
Cupcakes.
Cupcake, cereal cupcakes. Let me grab them.
So, we've gone from sheet cakes to cupcakes.
Tim's actually-
Anything's fine with me.
Best wishes, Principal Ringo.
This is new, special, for you.
Should I make a motion to adjourn so we can eat? Should I do that? All right, motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor? Meeting adjourned.
Awesome.